Good morning and welcome to our September 14th Board of County Commission meeting. We have an exciting morning planned. We're going to start off this morning with our invocation by our Chaplain Elsie Campbell, and I want to thank Elsie for being here on such short notice, and that will be followed by the Fledge of Allegiance led by Gary Bowerman from the U.S. Coast Guard. Please stand.
Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, we come this morning thanking you first of all for the gift of life. And we're living in a time when I suspect there's not many folks at all around here that don't know of a loved one or friend that has lost their life in the last months. And so we are very cognizant of the fact that life is pretty fragile, and it's also pretty precious. So today, we give you thanks for that gift. We give you thanks for those who are involved in caring for the sick, our first responders, our healthcare providers, and Lord, we pray you would energize them beyond what normally they would have for the difficult times that we are living in. Father, we're grateful that today we can acknowledge that in the midst of and even in spite of those kinds of difficulties, that there is that competitive spirit that wells up within each of us. And though the prevailing winds would cause us to think that everybody gets a trophy, thank you that there is still that underlying and overriding spirit of seeking to be as best as we can be. And today, we will honor specifically two groups who have caught that prevailing wind, and they have risen, and they have prevailed, and they have made the people of Martin County extremely proud. We thank you for so very much, the Martin County North Little League team, their efforts, their focus, their determination, their leadership among themselves and the leadership of their coaches and managers, for the sacrifices that moms and dads made in order for these young men to achieve. We acknowledge that. We give you thanks. And then, Father, we also thank you for the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla that have constantly sought to be effective, to be preventive, and to be responsive when the call requires. We thank you that those efforts and those hours of training and meeting certain criteria brought them to being the National Flotilla of the Year. Father, we are grateful for a place called Martin County. We are thankful for a group of folks who are sitting at the dais, those who have been willing to give of themselves far above and beyond what many of us even are aware of. Thank you for their families, families who have sacrificed, sacrificed evening meals when they couldn't be there, sacrificed private time because their spouses and dads and moms had to be public, sacrificed because there's always that element of criticism that sometimes goes beyond constructive criticism. So, Father, today as we begin this session, I pray that your Spirit would be among us, and you would prompt us, and that we might conduct ourselves so that you would be pleased. And we give you thanks for all of this in your strong and mighty name. Amen. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, as far as our agenda this morning, we have one additional item. It is Departmental Number Seven, Appointment of a County Commissioner to the Florida Association of Counties, Access 67 Initiative to Implement a Full Approach to Deliver High-Speed Broadband. We have no consent agenda polls. And with that, I'll come back to the Board for approval of the agenda. Okay, great. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And as Chaplain Campbell mentioned, we have a very exciting morning this morning, and we are awfully proud of these two groups that joined us this morning for proclamations. It really highlights the excellence that we have in Martin County. We're going to start this morning with a proclamation to our Little League World Series team here, and they are the first on the Treasure Coast to make it to the Little League World Series, and it's been quite a while since a Florida team made it to Pennsylvania. So, we want to recognize you this morning, and I'm going to have Laura introduce it, and then Mark Rogers is going to come up and give us a little bit more about the team and their adventures to Williamsport.
We don't have an actual proclamation, Commissioner. We're just recognizing the team. So, we have here, of course, the Martin County North Little League 12U All-Star Team, and we have Coaches Mark Rogers, Craig Sacavino, and Brant Martin here with us today.
Mark, would you like to join us up here?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. Thank you so much for having us here. We're humbled, honestly, to be in front of you. You know, I was sitting here looking at the five of you, and it wasn't long ago I was standing before the five of you. We were at the library next door because we were separated because of COVID, and I was asking you the favor of opening up our ballparks so that we could get back on our fields and play, and you graciously and thankfully allowed us to get back on our fields. And it's that kind of support that brings us to a moment like this. Without that kind of support, we couldn't be here. These are 13 amazing young men. I wish all of them were here today. We only have 11 of them with us. Two of them had engagements that they couldn't get out of, and of course, our assistant coaches as well. They are amazing young men. This summer, it was interesting. One of the, probably the number one question we all got asked is, where's Martin County? Where's Palm City? Where's Stewart? You know, there's so many Palms. There's Palm Coast, and there's Palm Beach, and there's Palm Harbor where we won the state championship. But we all had to point at the map. I think everybody, at least almost everybody now knows where Palm City and Martin County is, and they were amazing ambassadors for this community. I will tell you that so many reporters, and we had an opportunity to speak to, you know, several reporters while we were up there, and so many of them asked us the question, "Tell us about Martin County. What's Palm City? What's Martin County all about?" And I said this the day, the night we had the parade, and I think some of you were there, and I don't mind repeating it again because I think it's important that we reiterate this. What we are, and what I told everybody, and I meant it from the bottom of my heart, we are a community of schools and churches and ballparks and people that really truly care about our children and about the next generation. We have, you know, an amazing, these kids, this doesn't happen by accident. This happens, it starts in places like this where you support our programs. It starts with people like Kevin Abate, and I think, is Dave Gladding here this morning?
He is, I see him back there.
And Dave Gladding, the people in the county that support our programs on a day-to-day basis, those of you sitting in front of us who budget, give us the money to have the ballparks that we do have, that allows these young men and women, there's a lot of young women in this town who play softball, allow us to play. And but not for that support, we're not here. I'm so proud of this community, and the way these young men represented you and their parents and their teachers and their pastors and their friends and their neighborhoods was astounding. I was, I've told everybody that I had such high expectations for the World Series and what it would be like to go to Williamsport and represent our county, and it exceeded my expectations in ways I can't even imagine. It was overwhelming, and I couldn't be more proud of these guys. And in a year, it's tough enough to get there in a normal year when there is no COVID and there aren't those restrictions. For us, for these young men to overcome all of those hurdles that we had to overcome, and the discipline that they learned, I've told them, and they know how I feel about them, I've told them that these are the future leaders of not only our county and our state, but our country. I mean, these guys have, I'm telling you, that the 13 of them will change our world for the better, and that's what makes me most proud. We will forget the scores, and we will forget the teams we played against, but the lessons they learned will never be forgotten. And I thank you all for this honor for being here today. I feel like I know you all well because it's always, I'm always coming to you, asking you for a favor, and it's really, really nice today to just come and say, "Thank you. Thank you very much." So, on behalf of our players, our families, our community, our Little League, I thank you all for allowing us this honor of being here today. At this time, I would like to invite Preston Sullivan, one of our players, to come up. He's got something to say, and then we'll go from there. Preston?
Hi, my name is Preston Sullivan. I'm a seventh grader at the Pine School. I've been in the Martin County North Little League program since I was four years old. I want to thank you guys for all your support, and as a token from our team, we want to give you all a signed ball.
Oh, wonderful. Want to join them in the well and take a photo?
Yeah, we're going to come in here, Mark.
Mark?
In the dugout, right up in here in the dugout.
Dugout.
Come into the dugout, guys. Come in for a picture. Have you had your picture taken at all recently?
No.
No.
One, two.
Let's have everybody scoot in. Oh, perfect. Make sure, yeah, make sure we can see your faces. Yep, we gotta be able to see everybody. All right, just keep smiling. You know how to do this. Make sure you're familiar. Yeah, everybody just keep smiling. Just keep one, two, three, just keep smiling. A lot of paparazzi here. Couple more. Everybody got what they need?
All right, and they're going to introduce themselves very quickly. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Brennan Jones. I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Anderson Middle School.
Hi, my name is Zachary Stern. I'm in the seventh grade, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School.
What position do you play?
Second base.
All right.
Hi, my name's Evan Mottohome. I'm in sixth grade, and I'm homeschooled, and then I play left field.
Very nice.
Hi, my name is Tyler Fitzgerald. I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School, and I play centerfield.
My name's John Thornton. I'm in seventh grade. I go to Stewart Middle School.
And?
I play pitcher.
I figured as much.
Hi, my name's Dylan Thomas. I go to Anderson Middle School, and I play pitcher and first base.
Right.
My name's Frankie Brankleoni. I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School, and I play third and pitcher.
My name's McLean Lewis. I'm in seventh grade. I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School. I play catcher.
My name's Jack Fener. I'm in seventh grade. I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School. I play left field.
My name's Mason Galdees. I play left field, and I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School.
Yes, you do.
My name's Preston Sullivan. I go to the Pine School. I'm in seventh grade, and I'm a pitcher and first baseman.
I want to thank you all again for having us today. I'm Assistant Coach Brant Martin. Thank you, guys.
And I am Assistant Coach Craig Sacavino. Thank you again.
I think we have a couple comments.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
First off, let me just lead off. The team is located where? Do you play out of what town do you play out of? Palm City, Florida. That's right. Way to represent us. I appreciate it. I was, you know, a lot of us have been following your successes through the whole time. We've been to the parades. It was sweltering hot that day. But, and then I've watched the videos of the parade and looked at the pictures, and we all obviously know that you guys are good baseball players. But what I wanted to mention is the fact that, look, you had a lot of successes, and at the end, it didn't go exactly your way. But I watched, I looked at the Facebook posts, I saw the videos, I saw your parents' posts. There was no complaining, there was no angry, there was no bad sportsmanship. So, that in itself is such a great example for everyone else. You know, it didn't go exactly the way that you wanted, but you're still state champions. You still went to the World Series. How many millions of kids don't ever get to do that? So, I just wanted to let you know that I think you've made not only your state proud, your community, your schools, your coaches, your families, your teammates, but you've made yourselves, you can be very proud of what you've accomplished. We're all very proud of you because beyond your athletic abilities is your sportsmanship, and it was just the best it could be. So, congratulations.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, thank you. So, how many of you have heard of Field of Dreams, the movie? Imagine that, huh? So, what I couldn't help but think when you all were going up there, a friend of ours here in town actually went out there to the Field of Dreams and got to see that place. And if you all know, recently, there was a real game just played there, what, two, three weeks ago or so? And I was thinking about you guys up in Williamsport, and I'm thinking, you know, how many, how many kids, young adults, get to do like their own Field of Dreams? And you guys walking out on that field and playing your game is like your Field of Dreams. So, very cool for you. Ed is 100% right. You couldn't make us prouder from Martin County. Amazing job, your coaches, to you all, to your families, to the parents that, you know, allow you to do all this stuff. Absolutely fantastic. Great stuff. Great memories. Thank you.
Commissioner Jenkins.
I just thought I'd share a personal thing that happened to me. I was on vacation a few weeks ago, and I happened to be in Rapid City, South Dakota. And my wife and I and a couple of our friends walk into this sports bar restaurant thing, and I sit down and I look up, and guess who's playing on the TVs, and multiple TVs, not just one, but multiple. But I can assure you, everybody in that place knows where Martin County is right now, and I really appreciate it. I was very proud. Thank you.
Cool stuff.
Great. And Mark, you said this at the parade in downtown, and you said it again today, and I, again, I think that it's more than baseball, and Ed indicated, it's sportsmanship. And these 13 individuals are going to be our future leaders, whether they be locally or nationally, and we are so proud of you, and we are so happy that you can, could be here this morning, and we appreciate it. And now, I know you've missed a lot of school, and everybody's dying to get back. So, thanks again for being here.
Yeah, very cool idea.
Okay, we're going to give them just a couple minutes to clear out, and then we've got another amazing group of individuals to recognize this morning. So, our next... What an interesting mix from Little League to Flotilla. So, as my colleague just mentioned, what an interesting mix we have this morning, going from our future leaders, Martin County North Little League, to our current leaders, and...
We're flashing forward.
Yes, we are presenting this morning a proclamation, and we have the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 59, and they have received the National Flotilla of the Year Award. I was able to attend when they received the honor, and this flotilla that we have right here in Martin County of all the nation is Flotilla of the Year, and it was really touching to hear during the ceremony you had locally about all of the hard work and dedication and all the leaders and the effort that put into, were put into you winning the National Flotilla of the Year. So, I'm going to have Laura go ahead and introduce and invite Don Mueller and Kevin Gilbert up to the podium.
Good morning. The National Flotilla of the Year Award is presented annually by the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary National Commodore and recognizes the most exemplary flotilla in the nation. The members of Flotilla 59 are to be commended on this amazing achievement, and the Board would like to thank the flotilla members and those who preceded them for their dedicated service. And here to accept, obviously, with a lot of folks, we have Flotilla Commander Don Mueller.
Good morning.
Right in center. Here we go. And Kevin could make it this morning. I have Hank Koshard here with me. So, I want to thank you all. Your support and your leadership helps us get our mission done. So, right up front, we've got to say that. Flotilla Year, what does it look like? Give you a little few specs here. 518 hours dedicated to the Martin EOC, providing Coast Guard liaison support. Over 239 total flying hours for air patrols, providing search and rescue, SAR logistics flights, including two SAR cases where we integrated with the Coast Guard and local authorities. 817 hours of chef involvement, providing meals at the Coast Guard station and on the cutters. 150 hours for the design implementation of VHS repeater, standing watch at Station Fort Pierce, and also assisting with the steward blessing of the fleet. At COVID start, when all this fun started, Sector Miami put out a request, an all-hands request for homemade masks. So, our flotilla members and spouses provided 14 dozen masks for our active-duty members. We also have 649 voting safe program visits with the Martin County business partners. We've continued teaching our courses, going to virtual presentations. 84 inspections of private citizen votes, ensuring compliance with regulations. We continued our Wear Your Life Jacket to Work Day by going virtual. We had 13 members awarded the Presidential Volunteer Service Medal, the gold level, and we've got to remember, each one of these members had to have at least a minimum 500 volunteer hours. Finally, we received the NACO Three-Star Award for Excellence in Diversity, as well as for Excellence in Training. So, that's kind of a snapshot. That's not all, but that's kind of what we did to earn this prestigious award. Two things to remember. One, we're all volunteers. Some still work full-time, some have full-time commitments, some are retired. All are volunteers. The other thing, too, is COVID. When we were pressed to continue our mission sets during COVID, we had to take a step back, and like you all, had realized, how do we still do our job with COVID? And I'm so proud of our membership. They not only took the step back, but they embraced it, and they moved forward full throttle, rolled up their sleeves, and they got it done. So, I want to thank them, but thank you all for your support because, again, it helps us get the mission done. Thank you.
Don, why don't you have everybody come up in the well, and then all my colleagues, we'd like to get a picture of them.
Okay, we have two of our colleagues out there pointing our Little Leaguers. Come on. Come on down.
Congratulations, Don. Nice job.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
This is like the Hall of Fame. Good to see you. Come on, everybody. Everyone in. All hands on deck.
Roger that.
You know the term. I got a Navy son. Naval Academy. Good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
All right, yeah, let's have everybody even out the ballot. Everybody scoot on in. All right, let's do a few with a couple cameras here. We got one, two, three. Let's do a few. Go in. Keep smiling, just like our kids. Just keep smiling. One, two, three. Thank y'all very much.
It's like the Little League World Series. Oh, fair winds and following seas, yeah. Oh, I apologize.
Get a full-time out.
Space yours over a little bit.
All right, we're going to, I think that was a fabulous and uplifting set of presentations and proclamations this morning, and we're going to move on with public comment this morning. If you have, would like to comment and you have not filled out a form, please do so, and you can give to the bailiff. We have a three-minute time limit, and you will receive an indicator just shortly before your time is up that will let you know that you have a few seconds remaining. So, with that, our first speaker this morning is going to be Amy Pritchett. Our second behind Amy will be Erin Lirica. Lirica, good morning.
Good morning. Very briefly, the last Commissioner meeting, a survey was talked about in Rocky Point. I'm here again as a Rocky Point resident. The survey results are not reflective of what was reported to us. When we met with Jim Gordon, he told us that 55% of the residents of Rocky Point do want to make a change in the neighborhood regarding speed limits and calming devices and other stop signs and such. 44% responded that they didn't want to do anything. But if you lower, if you looked at the other two questions and combined those results, there were residents who wanted it lowered to 25, and there were residents that wanted it lowered to 30. Those added together were double digits above what the residents said they didn't want anything done. I'm asking for an agenda item to discuss neighborhoods, not just Rocky Point, but we were told that there are other neighborhoods as well. I'd like to know when that might come on the agenda. I'm going to keep coming here and asking. I'm not, I'm the broken record that won't go away. keep coming here and asking. I'm not, I'm the broken record that won't go away. Number two, there was a policy instated at the county level to segregate vaccinated against unvaccinated employees with regard to sick time. If a vaccinated employee were to get ill, become ill, they were allowed paid sick time. If you were unvaccinated, you had to use your vacation time. Under any circumstance, for any reason, this is reprehensible. We do not segregate people by their health status. And although I got a brief explanation, it certainly did not explain why we are doing that to our county employees. They work hard. They should not be punished because they decide for their own health that they do not want to become vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And our next speaker is Erin Larica, followed by Carla Elizondo. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just gonna parrot Amy and say that, yes, the results of the survey that went out in Rocky Point, 55% did vote for in favor of change, and we would just like to know when that's going to be on the agenda, as well as the other neighborhoods designated as neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Elizondo, followed by Laura. You guys are making it tough this morning. Giobbe?
Good morning. My name again is Carla Elizondo. I live in Hope Sound, Florida. We have an issue within Martin County. I have a specific incident that happened to me regarding noise abatement, but when I talk to the code enforcement officers, I'm finding that this is a familiar story throughout Martin County itself. We are growing, which is fantastic, but the problem with growth sometimes comes problems. We have many residential neighborhoods within Hope Sound and throughout the county, but in my instance, Hope Sound, and now we have businesses who are building on US-1, backing up to residential establishments and causing problems. My case specifically, a restaurant that comes in to prep at 5:30 in the morning is, his property is adjacent to our residential community, and he insists on turning up his radio and playing his music loud. When I called the police, the dispatcher said that they got tired of me calling and to not call anymore, and the police officer, who the last one who came, had told me the same thing. That's unacceptable. Martin County has a noise ordinance which needs to be enforced, but again, talking with code enforcement, we find out that the reason they have difficulty enforcing it is because they don't have the decibel meters. So, we have an ordinance with none of the equipment to support it. So, I'd like to see on the agenda where we might bring this to light and see what we can do about getting the authorities the proper equipment to enforce the ordinances we currently have in place.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Giobbe.
I'm Laura Giobbe, and I live in Stewart, 2950 Southeast Ocean Boulevard. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. It's a brief, I just want reassurance from the commission that the Martin County employees will not be discriminated against for vaccine and unvaccine, unvaccinated and vaccinated regarding sick leave.
You can make three minutes of public comment, not question and answer.
Okay, sorry then. All right, then the public comment basically is I'd like to ensure that the commission in Martin County does not enforce or in any way discriminate between vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals in regards to their sick leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Kathy Miskowski. And just for the gentleman that's missing the Coast Guard Auxiliary pin, we will keep our eyes out for that pin lying in the well and get that back to him.
Yep. That would have been great. Give him one of yours.
We will, we will definitely look for that throughout the day. Thank you, Kathy, for your patience.
You're welcome. Kathy Miskowski, resident in Martin County for 36 years. I am opposed to Martin County and the county administrators' new sick leave policy, which clearly discriminates against non-vaccinated employees. You should never develop policy that takes away a person's freedom of choice, along with the right to privacy of his or her medical record. This is no incentive, but instead is a way of forcing vaccinations on people. This policy can actually cause employees to lie, not be tested, and not pursue medical help, just to keep it quiet. This bullying, threatening, and intolerant policy causes polarization and division. This policy needs reversal immediately. Governor DeSantis struck down vaccine passports in Florida. This policy would seem to directly defy that order. We hold you accountable to do the right thing. And thank you for listening to my voice.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Pine, and Tom will be followed by Greg Britt.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tom Pine. I've been a member of, resident of Martin County for over 45 years. I presently live in Jensen Beach, Florida. The meeting of August 24, 2021, regarding the approval of the upcoming new contract with Waste Management was no less than a scam perpetrated on the taxpayers of Martin County. I'm sure when the state legislator passed the state law requirement governments' boards to hold a public meeting before an increase to the non-ad valorem assessment, they assumed the meeting would be held before the contract was approved, not after it was a done deal. The taxpayers of the Martin County that did show up wasted their time and effort. Another sad day for Martin County taxpayers. On September 3, 2021, I made a public request for the cost of printing and postage, and have yet to receive an answer. So, I used a prior request from 2019, estimated that the two mailings cost approximately $88,000. More wasted tax dollars since it was already a done deal. Just like when the commissioners tried to pass the fire assessment tax, notices were supposed to be sent mailed to every property owner in the county. Yet, many at the meeting said they never received such a notice. The answer from staff was a blank stare. Well, of course, the same thing happens this time. My mentor, Jackie Transcinder, never received any of these notices, two from the county, one from Waste Management. Next time, I would suggest the commission contact property appraisers' office to see if they could help, so that every Martin County taxpayer received these notices in a timely manner, just like we receive our property tax notices. If nothing else, that meeting was a teaching experience. The exact same thing would happen if the county is able to pass the fire assessment tax. Just three commissioners have to vote yes for an increase to the fire assessment tax, and it would be done deal. There are no limits to how high the tax could go. There are no protections like there are for property taxes. Please keep this in mind. Thank you for your time and have a safe day.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Greg Britt. Greg will be followed by Gail Golding.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a 50-year resident of Martin County, and for the last three years, I've been living in Hope Hills. And back on August 10, we had a commission meeting to discuss the improvements on Flamingo Drive and a connection to Sharon. And staff recommended it, the commission approved it unanimously, and we thought that our road was finally gonna come in to be coming up a finished project. Anyway, on August 24, a posse from Sharon Street came before the commission to block the connection of Sharon to Flamingo Drive. And now, it's a health and safety issue we have on Flamingo Drive. In the last years, we've had Francis and Jean lay trees across our road, had to call Martin County Fire Rescue in three or four hours to get the trees removed. And in just the last year, we had a windstorm, brought the trees down across the engine, took another three or four hours, five hours to clear the road. We've had fire rescue come in to remove a COVID-19 victim. They blocked the road with all their equipment. Nobody could get in or out. And just this last month, we had four people trapped in the park back there, and fire rescue had to come in again and evacuate them out and block the road again. So, we need to have that road connected so that the people on Flamingo and the people on Sharon have a chance of having two exits to get out of that community. Because now, if we have an incident, again, we'll be blocked in. We can't get out. We have a safety and life and health issue here that needs to be corrected, and it was already approved by the commission and voted in by the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker this morning is Gail Golding.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here and have the opportunity to speak to you about an issue that I'm very concerned about. That issue is the directive that was sent out regarding the COVID vaccination and unvaccinated sick leave for people who call in sick and work for the county. I understand the decision sunsetted yesterday on September 13, but I would hope that due diligence is done regarding any policies where there are changes. Any employee that goes beyond their job jurisdiction should be reprimanded. And also, I suggest that there is a training process that you should reinstitute for anyone who has authority on anything like this. These individuals need to have their job reviewed, their job description, and review their abilities to make decisions about anything that is causing something like this. I just want to remind you all that, you know, we have a wonderful governor here, Governor DeSantis, and I suggest that each and every one of you and whoever made this decision be told that they have to listen to what he has sent down. You know, we are working on no passport vaccine issues. I think that it's very, very important that these issues be brought to your employees and that they understand exactly what should be done and keep the constituents in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our last public speaker form this morning, and we are going to move on to commissioner comment, and we will start with Commissioner Jenkins.
To the speaker about Sharon Street connection, we have also received a number of comments with folks that live and could potentially access that connection. So, we are sending out a survey for the community. The boundaries of that being Sharon, the, I'm gonna call it the south side of Duncan, and a block east of the, where the road does not connect. And we're gonna survey that. I suspect that that survey should go out here in the next week or two, and at that point, it'll help us make a decision on what we're gonna do with that. The other issue is I need some help from my fellow commissioners on a project that we've got going on in Hope Sound.
Time's up, sir.
Damn. And I'd never talk much. Anyway.
Lots of time banked.
Yeah, exactly. So, we have a project, a potential project that's gonna be a joint effort between Dunbar Childcare Center and Project Lift. Dunbar Childcare Center owns property from the Board's Bridge Road. It's, I think it's at least an acre and a half, maybe even two. Currently, that was given to the county, or given to the Dunbar Center by the county with deed restrictions. Those deed restrictions, the language of those deed restrictions are not compatible with the Project Lift project. So, there is some... Stop me if I get off the rails here.
You're right.
Okay. So, I would like your support to direct staff to prepare the legal documents to change that deed restriction. Should I read the...
Do you want me to?
Yeah, please.
So, the, sorry.
It's on.
Sarah Woods, Martin County Attorney. We've received a letter from the Dunbar Center to Commissioner Jenkins, and the current deed restriction is to operate a childcare facility, and they're asking to expand that definition, which is to operate a childcare facility and for educational vocational training for children and youth. And understanding that, you know, it was quite a long time ago when we put the deed restrictions in, 1992, and so this would allow an expansion of the use of the property. So, with the Board's direction, the county attorney's office would like to work with the Dunbar Center to do revisions to the deed restrictions to allow this to go forward and bring it back to the Board for consideration of approval.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to do exactly that.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Campy. All those in favor?
Yeah, just a question.
Go ahead.
So, Sarah, does youth include, like, what, so, the definition of youth, does that go up to 18?
It's 21, I think.
21?
I'll be happy to. I don't know that I've got that in the letter. What we were trying to do is just get authority to start. Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that doesn't limit if they have a...
We're going forward with exactly what they ask for.
I understand, but someone may interpret that.
Okay.
If a 20-year-old, for instance, wants to enter the program, and someone says, well, wait a minute, that youth doesn't include. You know what I mean?
I'll clarify that. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Good.
That's it.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Campy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything further?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, just a story I forgot to add. When the team was here with the Martin County North Little League, I was, I've had the privilege of working with this group called Force Blue over the last probably five or six years, and they are retired Navy SEALs that have decided that when they retire, and they have all the training that we have spent to get them to be the most elite, finest underwater, above-water individuals in the world, that when they retire, they needed something to do. And so, they have been actively engaging with us on the coral reef restoration side of things that we're doing, because as you would maybe seem to imagine, they seem to do much better underwater doing things than they do above water, because a lot of their training is clearly underwater. And they are really good at what they do underwater. It's amazing, the talent these guys have. But I was with them a couple weeks ago, and we're talking about kind of what the next chapter is in terms of the coral reef effort. And it was interesting, because one of them was from Williamsport and knew everything there was to know about baseball, Little League, and could quote any kind of statistic, any kind of history, anything. And they absolutely knew where Palm City, Florida was, and they absolutely knew where Martin County was because of all that. And, you know, to the stories that were shared, you know, your being out west, and I was just like, well, that's kind of, you know, an interesting, like, I wasn't necessarily expecting that during the conversation, but he said, oh, no, they were there, and we knew exactly who they were, and they were amazing. So, just forgot to add that, but it was, I thought it was really super cool then.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Campy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot has transpired since the last time we've had an opportunity to meet. Some positive things, some negative things. I just wanted to take my time this morning to recognize 13 American heroes that were killed in Afghanistan in an explosion outside of the gates of the airport. They were in the process of rendering humanitarian assistance. It wasn't a combat mission where they were going door-to-door in a military capacity. It was to assist people that were desperate to get on... It was to assist people that were desperate to get onto the airport property. They were also, there were 90 Afghans that were killed in those two explosions, and I would like to take a moment to say their names. Marine Corps Lance Corporal David Espinosa, 20. Marine Corps Sergeant Nicole Gee, 23. Marine Corps Staff Sergeant Darren Hoover, 31. Army Sergeant, excuse me, Army Staff Sergeant Ryan Canouse, 23. Marine Corps Corporal Hunter Lopez, 22. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Riley McCollum, 20. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Dylan Marola, 20. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Kareem Nakui, 20. Marine Corps Corporal Dagan Page, 23. Marine Corps Sergeant Johani Rosario, 25. Marine Corps Corporal Umberto Sanchez, 22. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Jared Schmitz, 20. Navy Corpsman Max Soviak, 22. This speaks to me very, very directly. The 13, out of the 13, 12 of them were 20 years old, in their 20s, and four of them were 20. My son currently serves as an active-duty member of the Navy at the Naval Academy, and he is also 20. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurd.
I'm set.
And I had two things, but that was so moving that I now am going to pass on, oh, the, we'll request the two things. The one was the decibel meters, I would say staff could check and make sure we have those. And then, based on the comments this morning, the policy that they referenced, it's sunsetted?
Yes, ma'am. And that's actually under the purview of the county administrator to enact policies such as that, which I did. It was for a six-week period. Unfortunately, I mean, it did sunset as of yesterday, so it was based not in a vacuum. It was based on conversations with my leadership team on what was, and it did not segregate. It only talked about vaccinated employees. It did not discuss non-vaccinated. So, the department heads had purely discretion that for those that were non-vaccinated to also offer the sick leave.
Okay. Ms. Woods. Okay. Oh, and then one more question, because I'm having some commissioners, some issues now on Jefferson Street with some traffic, needing some traffic calming. So, we are bringing an item back for traffic calming, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes. I'll find out exactly when that's planned with Ms. Wixer.
Okay, because I have some, in addition to St. Lucie Boulevard, some issues that have arisen recently on Jefferson that I would like to add to that item discussion when it comes. Commissioner Smith?
And Taryn, maybe what we can do when that comes, when that item comes, the neighborhoods that are planned, that are in, at least in the queue at this point for, I guess we call them neighborhood stabilization projects, when there's multiple...
Restoration.
Restorations going on, we're doing roadwork, we're doing water and sewer, we're doing drainage. Maybe we could bring, if there is a list of the ones in the queue, so that we understand what's up next, so that we can maybe talk about the opportunities that neighborhoods may have in front of them with those kind of projects coming up, so they can be talked about more at the neighborhood level versus necessarily here, so that if people have ideas in their neighborhood that they want to bring forward, that is clearly probably the best time in the world to be doing things, because we're going to be ripping stuff up anyway. And, you know, whether it's Jefferson or stuff up in our neighborhood or wherever, it'd just be good to have that kind of heads up on that.
Okay. I agree. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to the agenda portion with our board and committee appointments this morning. We will start with the Health Facilities Authority appointment. And commissioners, did you submit your voting sheets? And Donna Gordon will present.
Donna Gordon, for the record, Administration, Health Facilities Authority. We had one outgoing person, their term was going to expire, and the person that received the most votes was Mr. Charles Cleaver. He received four votes.
Move approval of Chuck Cleaver.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And our next item is Board and Committee Appointments, number two, Library Board of Trustees Appointment.
Lots of applicants, Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Michelle Riley received two votes. Ms. Linda Sheldon received one vote. Dr. Wayne Maxson received one vote, and Mr. Sam Hay received one vote.
I'll be more than happy to move mine if...
We have a majority of two.
I know, but I'll move mine to Michelle if that makes it more appropriate, so that she has three votes.
Okay, with that, would someone like to...
Move approval, Michelle Riley.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
That was easier than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, me too.
Well, we get nine people that...
Nine excellent...
Each one of them had something on the resume.
Excellent applications, too.
Yeah, that was...
And we appreciate them and encourage them to continue to, you know, seek to serve on some of these committees. Our first public hearing of this morning is our public hearing number one to approve the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program reports and transmittal to the state. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm pleased to be here with you guys this morning. I'm Joanna Green, Human Services Supervisor, here on behalf of the Human Services Office. This is a public hearing to request the review and approval for submittal of SHIP program reports. The SHIP 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 grants are currently active. The annual reports for these programs are ready for submission to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, and board approval of the reports is required for submission.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with that? Okay, we'll have a motion by Commissioner Smith, and we'll need a...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second public hearing of the day is the Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 21-01. And do we have staff here to present this item? Chapter five, the transportation element. Maria Joes.
I just saw Maria walk that way. So, I can get it started.
Okay. We'll have Taryn Krizda introduce the item, and our next item will also be, so staff has prepared, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of an Ordinance for Chapter Five.
Here she comes.
So, I see Ms. Joes is on her way here. This is in accordance with the Florida statutes that requires three public hearings. The first public hearing for this plan amendment was taken to the local planning agency, June 3rd, and now, the second public hearing was conducted July 13th, and the board decided to transmit. And with that, I'll change it over.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Can you hear me? For the record, Maria Joes, Senior Planner with the Growth Management Department. So, today's public hearing is the adoption hearing for the CPA 21-01, Chapter Five, Transportation Element. So, this proposed text amendment was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners. The proposed text amendment is to Chapter Five of the COM Plan, and this amendment was initiated by the county. So, every five years, the Long Range Transportation Plan, also known as the LRTB, is updated by the Martin Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. So, this update assesses transportation needs, it updates the data, and establishes a long-range cost feasible plan. So, the latest adopted LRTB is the 2045 LRTB. The language and figures in Chapter Five, Transportation Element of the COM Plan shall be updated based on the latest data, the latest transportation data, and the latest long-range transportation plan. So, as we can see here, this is a summary of the proposed changes to Chapter Five of the COM Plan. So, the figures and language has been updated, will be updated through this proposal. The future transportation map series will be updated from 2040 to 2045. The existing transportation map series will be updated from 2017 to 2021. All the data has been updated to reflect current conditions, and the language in Chapter Five has been updated to reflect the latest policies, transportation data policies, and also to correct some of the outdated terms and to correct some of the grammatical errors that we found. Growth Management Staff has coordinated with the staff of Public Works Department and the Martin MPO staff to execute this text amendment. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment, so that the text and figures of Chapter Five, Transportation Element of the COM Plan may have the most recent and accurate data. That's all, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Chair, pending public comment, I'll move approval.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would wish to comment on this item? Okay, with that, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith. And we will look for a second, okay, a second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joes.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay. We are moving on to Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Chapter Five, Alcoholic Beverages, General Ordinances, Martin County Code, presented by the very smiley Irene Settlemeyer.
Good morning, commissioners. Irene Settlemeyer, Principal Planner with the Growth Management Department. I'm here today to present proposed changes to Chapter Five of the Martin County General Ordinances. Overall, Chapter Five does four things. It identifies the zoning districts in which alcoholic beverages can be sold. It establishes required minimum distances between certain uses and the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption. It creates several exemptions, primarily to county-owned properties and similar institutional uses. And it authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to, for particular properties, to waive any of the distance requirements after a public hearing. So, the uses which require minimum distances are public and private schools. A licensed premise must be at least 500 feet from the school property. Parks, playgrounds, and places of worship, the licensed premise must be 300 feet from those uses. A licensed premise must be at least 50 feet from a residential zoning district, and a licensed premise must be at least 50 feet from a dwelling. So, staff from Growth Management Department and the Office of Community Development developed the proposal being presented today. It was presented to the local planning agency, which recommended that the board approve staff's recommendation. It was also presented to the CRA board. The CRA board suggested a modification of staff's recommendation, and that has to do with dwellings that exist in the corridor or sub-district. And staff has adopted the recommendation of the Community Redevelopment Agency as its own, and that is included in the ordinance that appears on page 373. So, generally, the recommendations that staff is making apply only in the CRAs. There is one proposed change that will apply throughout the county, and that is the clarification, let me get to the ordinance, the clarification as to how you measure from a dwelling. So, currently, the text is a little bit ambivalent as to how you measure, because it refers to the boundary of a dwelling. So, we're suggesting that 50-foot distance between a dwelling and the licensed premise will be from the lot on which the dwelling is located. So, there's no confusion, are you measuring from the dwelling, the walls of the dwelling, or are you measuring from the lot line? So, that, in this 5.3D, that would apply countywide. It's a little more protective of the residential use by measuring from the lot line, clarifying that you measure from the lot line. So, the other recommendations that apply only in the CRAs would reduce or eliminate these distance requirements in some locations in the CRA. So, the proposals are, one, if the licensed premise is also licensed as a restaurant with 51% of revenue from the sale of non-alcoholic beverages and food, that it would be permitted to locate in any of the commercial sub-districts in the CRA and be subject to no distance requirements. If it's a licensed premise, also licensed as a restaurant, it can locate in any of the commercial districts. If the licensed premise is proposed for the core or the waterfront sub-district, and those are the areas that are intended to be the most compact, walkable town center-type environments, if the licensed premise is in the core or the waterfront, it would similarly be subject to no, none of the distance requirements. If the proposed, if the licensed premise is proposed for one of the other commercial districts, like the corridor, general, industrial, railroad corridor, the licensed premise would not be subject to the 300 feet from parks, playgrounds, and places of worship, or the 500 feet from a school, but it would be subject to the 50-feet distance between a dwelling or a residential district. And then, finally, we provide it that if the existing dwelling is located in the railroad corridor or the industrial sub-district, that it would, a licensed premise would not have to be 50 feet from a dwelling that is located in the industrial sub-district or the railroad corridor. This is one of the changes we made in response to input from the CRA. And originally, we had proposed that if a dwelling was located in the corridor sub-district, that it also would not be protected by the 50-foot minimum distance requirements. But upon recommendation of the CRA board, we looked at the maps again and concluded that that was a good change. There were quite a few dwellings in the corridor sub-district in Golden Gate. There were quite a few dwellings in the corridor sub-district in Rio, along Dixie Highway. So, that concludes my presentation. You had, the agenda packet included some somewhat informal maps showing what the impact of these distance measurements would have on the commercial sub-districts in the CRAs, and I'm glad to look at any of them. If the... and I'm glad to look at any of them, if any of the board members wish me to pull that up. But that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we have a couple. Commissioner Smith?
Thanks, Irene. The last two you just mentioned, the two industrial categories, one seemed to be the opposite of the other in your presentation. So in the first part of your presentation, you said that there ought to be a 50-foot separation between the industrial and residential, right?
Right. If the dwelling is outside the industrial district, but it could be adjacent to, the dwelling or the residential district could be outside of the industrial district but be subject to the 50-foot.
Okay, and then the second thing you just said about industrial, I thought was the same thing but the reverse.
Right. It's because I switched from where is the licensed premises located and to where is the dwelling located. So if the dwelling is in the industrial sub-district or the railroad corridor, currently, the railroad corridor has no dwellings. There's only one railroad corridor, it's along Shell Bridge in Hope Sound. We found one dwelling in the industrial sub-district in Rio, which we believe is a caretaker's cottage for the facility there. But if the dwelling is in the industrial sub-district or the railroad corridor, the 50-foot distance would not apply to that dwelling.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I don't know if this is working really well. Can you hear me all right out there?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand the logic. So the residential unit inside the industrial district is residential unit, right?
If there's a residential unit in the industrial district, yes.
It's residential, if it is, right? So there's somebody living there?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody that's adjacent to but not in the industrial district, presumably is living there. With that, you need a 50-foot separation, but the residential inside does not?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the logic. So if you are unfortunate enough to happen to own the house that's inside the industrial district, you get penalized versus outside?
Well, if you consider it a being penalized, yes. We are proposing that dwellings in the industrial sub-district, which we are aware of one...
I get it. I'm only pointing that out to say, what's of interest to me in the thought process is that you have an industrial use to begin with, an industrial district. So in Rio, we have one very large industrial district. I don't, I'm trying to think if there's any residential completely adjacent to, at this point, completely adjacent to the industrial. I don't think that there is.
One of the things is that the industrial sub-district only permits, this may be responsive to your concern, residential use is only permitted in the industrial sub-district if it's part of a mixed-use project.
So I'm assuming at some point, we just had a significantly large portion of the industrial district sell in Rio. It's no longer what it's been for 85 some years or so. I'm assuming someday that will redevelop in an industrial district. And I'm sure it will have both residential and commercial and maybe some industrial. Who knows what that will look like in the future? But it's a large parcel against the railroad in Rio. So what happens if someone wants to build a restaurant that's adjacent to the other district that's adjacent to it? They won't be able to do that in the master plan if they build one?
So if it's also licensed as a restaurant?
51% or more?
Then it is permitted anywhere without any distance requirements applying.
That answers it then, that's great. But thank you for bringing up the map because that's, if you were to look at the large kind of, can you zoom in a little bit more?
Yes.
And go to your east. So that light yellow area is all industrial?
Yes.
So anything adjacent to that potentially will either be residential or commercial?
Right. So this, right, I mean, residential is permitted here in corridor, and of course, residential is permitted in the general and in the core. So if a new, you know, if new residential were located here, it would be eligible for the 50 feet, you know, a new licensed premise would have to be at least 50 feet from the new residential lot there. Or if any residential were to be constructed here, a licensed premise would be, have to be at least 50 feet away, as staff has proposed.
Unless it was 51% restaurant, food?
Correct.
And then the 50-foot separation doesn't apply?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jenkins?
So I appreciate all the hard work you all both have put in on this, and this is necessary for our CRAs to come to fruition here. The deal breaker for me, we talked about yesterday, is, and Hope Sound may be an area that is different than the rest of the county's CRAs, but potentially doing away with the setback from residential in the Hope Sound CRA, we could potentially have a bar stool literally on the property line of a residential property. I, that, I just can't do that. I can't support the whole thing because of that. If there was some type of buffering with a missionary wall, planting, stuff like that, I already have a little bit of an issue with a couple of food and alcohol establishments that do back up to residential properties. I'd be more than happy to support this if we have some type of, I just feel that we need to have a little more communicate, or a little more, this needs to evolve a little bit more to protect the residential that backs up to this. We have a outdoor bar in our CRA that a number of residents across an alley can watch TV because there's no buffer at all currently. So I'm sorry, but I'm just not going to be able to support this unless we do something about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Staff, I'm gonna push my button, sorry.
Go ahead, Irene.
Staff certainly agrees with you that the issue about the 50-foot separation from a dwelling or a residential district is not as easy a call or a recommendation to make compared to, say, 500 feet from a school. And we, you know, after meeting with you, we did look at where core and residential but or would be impacted by this change in the rule. We also looked at, you know, Rio and Old Palm City, and they similarly have some residential uses currently in the core and, you know, the 50-foot distance from the residential. And like along Map Road, for example. But in Map Road, it seems like the 50-foot distance will be able to be accommodated because that's where the parking is supposed to go. But anyway, it's a legitimate concern.
Yeah, I agree with Irene as well. Susan Cora, Office of Community Development. There we go. So on Map Road, we will not probably have the same issue that we do see on Bridge and A1A in Hope Sound, and that's because the lots are bigger, the core area is bigger. There is not the same closeness of conflict as you would find in Hope Sound. I wish that I could make more land for you, Commissioner, so we could make that easier. But, you know, perhaps some of your suggestions would be something we could do for Hope Sound.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I recognize that in the last 20 years that the goal of the Board Commission has been to encourage mixed use through regulation, through relaxation of regulation in the CRAs. But I also know that when that happens, you disrupt traditional neighborhoods and you create conflict. And I know that in Port Salerno, the residences were there long before the commercial use, the restaurant uses, the bar uses, the alcohol uses were commonplace. And it's created conflict that just doesn't go away. And I also look at Rio, and there's a huge project that is under consideration that would change the character of Rio forever and create, I think, conflict. So I'm afraid that we would be reacting to a conflict that we create. So I, you know, I recognize your goals. I just don't think that you can force uses through regulation or that you shouldn't, particularly when you have longstanding, existing neighborhoods, that they're my first priority. So I don't want to disrupt those neighborhoods by introducing conflict with no regulations for new uses.
Commissioner Campy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I had the opportunity to have this conversation with staff, I had asked them similar questions, and I get that this is a challenge because you're trying to create a set of guidelines universally. And there are so many different set of circumstances that could derail it, as Commissioner Jenkins said. For me, it's similar to what I just heard from my colleague. For me, it's who was there first? Now, Commissioner Smith's example was an undeveloped piece of property that's going to a but potentially existing residential. So for me, if the business is there before the residential, you can have one set of guidelines. Because if you created a situation, whether it's existing business or a future business, that has not yet impacted residential, and then like in the example on the map you showed in Rio where there could potentially be residential homes built after the fact, then just like everybody else that purchases a home, if you buy near restaurants or people that buy near the airport or buy near the railroad tracks, and then they're like, I hear the planes or I hear the train, well, that was your prerogative when you bought there. However, if the residential component was there first and we create a situation where businesses can fill in, like the woman that was here this morning that was saying there's a business that is behind her and they open up at 5 o'clock in the morning, it's not necessarily, in our minds, we're all thinking nighttime, restaurants, bars, bands. This woman's got a sort of, I guess, a disrespectful neighbor, business owner, who thinks it's appropriate to blast a radio next door to her home. So we don't know what the issue will be. It could, there's 1,000 different scenarios that could upset people. So for me, I think you need to have two sets of guidelines. I was listening carefully about them. To me, 50 feet sounds close. That's about the, about from here to the windows. We had a guy, an operation, it was here a couple of weeks ago, the Stewart Sailfish Club. And one of the things that we discussed, and maybe you need to have it in your guidelines, is a set of buffer standards. Because what Commissioner Jenkins said is that you could sit in your own backyard and watch TV at the bar across the fence. And there were people that were here the other day, residents that were saying they could sit in their backyards, and the people that were at that club, bar, were right past a chain-link fence. I wouldn't want it. So my recommendation, which could effectively take in some of the comments that we've heard today, and again, will remind people that the Commissioners are not allowed to speak to each other. You're not allowed to tell us each other's opinions. Prior to right now, I had no idea that that was Commissioner Jenkins' concern. I had no idea that that's what Commissioner Hurd was going to say. So I think you need to have a set of standards or guidelines. If the business is there first, then, then yes, maybe 50 feet's appropriate. You said within the railroad corridor, you only showed countywide two examples. One was a caretaker cottage on an existing business. That's different. So now, if someone wanted to build a residential community next to your set of guidelines in the railroad corridor, well, that's on them. And then they would have to understand that they're selling homes to prospective buyers, and the buyer would have to do some due diligence and say, well, wait a second, I see hurricane wings 50 feet away from my home. I don't want to live next to a hurricane wings. Because remember, it's not just noise, it can also be smells. I mean, if people are preparing and have, you know, remember down right where the Popeyes, I mean, we don't even want to bring that up. We tried to strategize a lot on, well, because these are the, these are the examples we already know about. They're not unintended, we know. And we worked hard, and staff worked really hard, on creating language that was appropriate. And it wasn't about noise ordinances. It was about what kind of exhaust system are we going to require a restaurant to put on top of their roof? And it's not just grease or chicken. I know some people that live near donut facilities that don't like that either. I happen to love it, but, I mean, I mean, so maybe what we need to do here, because I can sense, you know, if I take the temperature of the board, this is not going to go well for you all. So maybe as a suggestion, or if it needs to be a motion, I would say perhaps we create a set of guidelines. I know you've worked very hard on this already, but instead of having the entire thing fail, set a guidelines that would say if it's a business that was there first before residential, these are the guidelines, maybe it's 50 feet. But if it's a neighborhood that was there before the business, 50 feet's probably too close. And just like we ask residents before purchasing a home to do due diligence, if you're a business and you're trying to put yourself on Bridge Road or Map Road, and you realize that I'm going to get a quarter of an acre of piece of property and I'm going to put the parking lot and the outdoor dining, but now I have a 100-foot buffer as to not upset my existing neighbors, and I have to look at a set of circumstances on what kind of buffer will I have to have? If it's bushes, that's a visual block. But it's not, as far as I'm concerned, it's a very poor sound block or smell block. There's very few things you can block smell with. But a concrete wall, which I have seen us require businesses build. I remember when the Circle K was built on Bridge and US-1, one of the highlights they did was a very large, I'm sure expensive, cinder block wall that separated all of those neighbors and gave those neighbors some privacy and some buffer. So two sets of guidelines for who came first and a series of buffer standards would make me much more comfortable in approving something like this. But as it's written this morning, I would have to stick with what I've heard my colleagues say. Thank you.
I'm just gonna add some of my comments. And as Commissioner Campy just said, we don't get to hear our colleagues until we come in this room. So hearing some of those, my initial reaction to this was somewhat favorable. I was concerned about the schools. Can you pull up the schools? It seems like those primarily were in Hope Sound as well. And hearing some of Commissioner Jenkins' comments and as well as some of the conflicts, I do think it warrants a little more work. I'm a little bit more satisfied with the CRA in Golden Gate, but I see some other challenges throughout the county. And so are those the schools?
So this is the Palm City Elementary School, and 500 feet from the school property brings you down to about here. I mean, we have that in the...
Sattlemeyer, you understand that that school's being relocated?
Yeah, but you measure from the school property?
Line.
No, but they've purchased, you see this beige section there where your cursor is?
Yes.
That's going to be where the school is?
Right. So, right, their school, they have this property, yes. They have this property, yes.
Using Palm City as an example, if you look at where that beige box is, move down to your left, right there, the big beige box below the school?
Yes.
That's an area that is... That's an area that is absolutely in play on Martin Highway in Palm City. So we'd need to create guidelines that would not adversely affect schoolchildren. But then there's across that, the pink to the left of it, that's also in play and could be residential. So who came first? But there's other residential homes that are right along there that's part of Oak Brook. So that's why I'm saying you can't have a one-size-fits-all strategy. You might have to have, I know you can't have 50, but you might have to have who came first.
Well, the code currently provides basically a who came first with regard to if the licensed premise existed prior to a school being developed or to a residential neighborhood, the distance requirements don't apply. If the licensed premise comes first, the distance requirements don't apply. You know, the 50-feet residential separation from here, 50 feet will take you, you know, would not impact the development of this property at all, really. It's just a small thing. 500 feet from the school property would bring you down pretty far into these properties. So it would potentially have an impact on redevelopment or new development of the Martin Highway frontage of those properties.
Well, it would have an impact on specific development. It's not like the owner of that property couldn't develop it within the 500 feet. It would just have to meet certain criteria that you're talking about for alcohol sales and restaurants. That could be an office park, or things that are not, places that are retail stores that are not serving alcohol, or restaurants, or things like that.
Correct.
So it's not like we've taken the value of that person's property. They can still do a million things, they just can't do a couple.
Well, yes, correct. So if I'm here, you know, I mean, staff is certainly glad to bring this back to you, you know, to suggest that rather than a motion to vote for or against staff's recommendation to adjourn the public hearing and will come back to a date certain, adjourn to a date certain, and we could bring it back with some additional tweaks. I guess it would be good to clarify with regard to the residential uses or the dwellings. Are we talking about including restaurants?
May I make a suggestion?
Commissioner Smith.
So we have a CRA board, and this is what they should be diving into. I think what I would do, Irene, I would take the comments from all of us, whatever, take that back to the CRA, and really go through where the challenge areas are. I don't know exactly which lot Harold's talking about in Hope Sound, but peel those apart, take that onion and like literally pull the layers off, and apply the different concepts and ideas so that you can come back to us, or they can come to us at least with a more comprehensive set of ideas. Maybe it's a two-tier thing like Ed's talking about, I don't know. I don't know if you can legally do that or not, but if you can, great. But I mean, we could debate this.
Glad you answered.
Right.
If you can legally do that, because Ms. Story has her light on.
Because we could debate this for the next hour.
Yes.
And I don't know that we're going to resolve it. I just, I would send it back to them and let them rehash this all out.
Ms. Story.
So Commissioners Krista Storey, Senior Assistant County Attorney. The board has two options. You can take no action, you can continue this matter to a date certain. I don't know, you know, what timeframe that would be. This ordinance just requires, technically only requires to come to the board. It was taken to the local planning agency and the community redevelopment agency to provide input. One of the things, this, based on your comments, and I appreciate those, you know, one of the things that we've got to all be cognizant at this time, the distance requirements that are embedded in the ordinance have been in there for a long time. We must also now kind of go globally and take into account property rights that property owners have that may or may not have developed their property at this point in time. So the complexity of changing regulations regarding distance and separations, and how those apply to existing uses or proposed uses, is a much more complex issue than it used to be. And so certainly that we're going to have to dive in, and the comments about additional buffer requirements on all those kinds of things. So it's not something certainly, and these would not be guidelines, these are intended to be regulations. And so we've just got to, we've got, based on your comments, and I don't know if we can, we could certainly continue it or just re-advertise it when it's ready.
So if we take no action today, then it will go back to the CRA and filter?
Then we'd re-advertise it if you'd vote to take no action. And then that way, staff can bring it back when it's ready. It's a 10-day advertising requirement. At some point, that the issue of the zoning districts has to be addressed, because currently Chapter 5 does not account for the CRA zoning districts. So at some level, we have to do that, you have to do that, and then flesh out the rest of the details.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
That last part just raised another concern, but I'll make a motion that we take no action today, and that we ask staff to take this back to the CRA for a very comprehensive discussion on the legal side, on all the other things, and what you've heard. That's my first part, and then I'll come back with something else.
Okay, great. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. We're going to take public comment on this item. Though, is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment? Then if you want to step forward, and then if you haven't filled out a form, you can do that after, but just state your name for the record.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Linda Fithian, and I'm a Palm City resident. And my only comment to what I just heard from the attorney say is that I believe this ordinance has been in place for a very long time. And so people who bought the property already knew the ordinance was there, and to say that we have to allow them to do what they, essentially, what I heard, do what they want and change the zoning because of the property owners, doesn't seem to make any sense to me. That's what I wanted to say. They bought the property knowing what the zoning was already, and just to change it because somebody wants to do something. My question is, why are you trying to change zoning? I'm concerned about the schools, I'm concerned about the residential areas, I'm concerned about a lot of it. And there's a lot of over, seems like a lot of overbuilding that's going on right now. So that's my only comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. And go ahead. Yes, go ahead. And next public commenter?
I just wanted to thank all of you for making the comments that you did. Had the city of Stewart done this with Costco, I think we'd all be in a lot better situation. So thank all of you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment on this item? Commissioner Smith?
No, when the motion's done.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith to take no action, and...
Seconded by?
Yes. And seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. Any other comments? And so, a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
My accompanying comment, and it was just the last part of what Krista was talking One of the hopes that I had, and I talked about this with staff the other day, is that taking everything out of the codes that we could and putting it into the CRA code, I really did think we were 100% there, and we're not. And so this is still clawing back into the old codes, which is causing conflict, because as you just said in the last part of your thing, the zoning isn't reflected, these zoning categories are not reflected in Article 5, because they're new. And so at some point, we have to make them consistent with what Article 5 says. Unless we weren't clawing back into Article 5 and the rules that we were creating, which is a conversation I would have with the CRA, create the alcohol rules, distance requirements, whatever they are, for the CRA, and extract that out of Article 5 altogether, so we're not clawing back constantly trying to match up what now doesn't fit and we knew wouldn't fit, because we've created a whole new chapter and a whole new set of standards. It's just for, food for thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, with that, we are just past our time to take our closed captioning break. It's 10:45 currently. We will be back at 10:55.
Okay, good morning and welcome back from our break to our September 14th Board of County Commission meeting. And we are going to resume with our public hearing quasi judicial number one, request for zoning district change by DST Holdings LLC presented by Matt Staley. Good morning.
Yeah, it's quasi.
Oh, yes, okay, so it's a quasi judicial hearing and we will take ex parte communication. Commissioner Jenkins.
I have any, they've been filed.
I have any, they're filed.
I don't have any. I don't have any and they've been filed.
If I have any, they've been filed and do we have any return receipts?
Uh, no.
And?
Provided at the LPA, I'm sorry.
Okay, and Leila, would you like to swear in the witnesses?
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, and if you'd like to go ahead and introduce the item.
All right, good morning Commissioners. For the record, Matt Staley, Principal Planner with Growth Management. A full copy of the agenda item and my staff report has been provided in my work history. This is a request by DST Holdings LLC for a proposed amendment to the county zoning atlas for an industrial district classification. A zoning district change from the existing R2 single-family residential district and A1 small farms district to the LI limited industrial district or the most appropriate zoning district has been requested. A detailed staff report reflecting compliance findings has been provided as part of this agenda item. Let me go here. The approximate 1.03 acre undeveloped parcel is located on the east side of Southwest.
Mr. Staley, can you make the whole screen, the presentation, please? Or Donna, thank you.
Uh, the, I'm sorry, the approximate 1.03 acre undeveloped parcel is located on the east side of Southwest Old Kansas Avenue, approximately 375 feet north of Southwest Jack James Drive in Stewart. And here you can see more zoomed in version, you have the recently renovated gas station here and Mashmore Concrete Batch Plant here. The property has a split zoning of R2 single-family residential district and A1 small farms district which are incompatible with an underlying future land use designation therefore the request for zoning district change is considered mandatory. And here's a future land use map, you can see the surrounding properties are all zoned industrial or future land use of industrial with the I-95 right-of-way and Canter Highway right-of-way adjacent. And as we mentioned, the split zoning district, there are three standard zoning districts available to implement the industrial future land use policies of the comp plan which are LI, GI, HI, and also PED zoning is an option. And here provided the three available zoning districts development standards as mentioned before, they're requesting LI, the least intense of the three zoning districts. Staff recommends that the requested LI limited industrial district is an appropriate zoning district with respect to the application, the goals, objectives, and policies of the comp plan, LDR, and county codes. The matter was considered by the local planning agency on August 19th, 2021. The LPA recommended approval of the applicant's request. And I also wanted to point out a, point your attention, there was a typo in the agenda item on page 419 here where it references general commercial, that should be LI limited So with that, staff moves that the board receive and file the agenda item summary and all its attachments, including the staff report for the record as exhibit one, and move that the board approve the request to amend the Martin County zoning atlas to change a zoning district on the subject property from R2 and A1 to LI or the most appropriate zoning district and adopt the resolution of approval. That concludes my presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for staff? Does applicant have a presentation?
Good morning, everybody. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Melissa Corbett. I don't have a presentation because this is pretty straightforward. My client owns the other parcel that's up on this corner that has an LI land use and zone, or I'm sorry, an LI zoning, and he was just going with the same zoning district that his other parcel has. It is the least intense of the three options and he just wants the same zoning district on all of his properties. He can't do anything with it the way it is right now. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Does anybody from the public wish to comment?
Motion to accept stance recommendation, second.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, our next item is departmental number one, Office of Management and Budget Items, which require board approval, presented by Jennifer Manning. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Jennifer Manning, O&amp;D Director. I have nine items on the agenda. The first one is permission to apply and accept the state aid library's grant in the amount of $85,201. It is going to provide free services to Martin County residents and it does not require a grant match. Second item is permission to apply for the FY22 mosquito control grant in the amount of $50,688.33. It is used for chemicals and the matching dollars are operating which is purchased in chemicals as well. Third item is permission to accept the, from the Florida Health, the Florida Health Overdose Data Action Grant, and this is for opioid overdose and they want to provide funding for salaries, supplies, educational programs, and other outreach, and it's in the amount of $67,400. Fourth item is permission to accept the Florida Department of Transportation grant for the, to mill and resurface runway seven dash 25 at the airport. The grant award is $100,000. It requires a $20,000 match which is, which will come from the airport reserves. Item number five is also permission to accept the Florida Department of Transportation grant for tractor equipment. That is also for $100,000. It requires a $20,000 match and that will also come from the airport reserves. Item number six, permission to accept the local planning agency supplemental grant funding. In this case, we're requesting a reduction in the grant in the amount of $364,000 and the matching dollars are also a reduction in the grant and that's because the cost Item number seven, permission to accept the Florida Department of Environmental Protection grant for the beach management funding. This is for Hutchinson Island Four Mile Beach. The, the amount is $206,865. The matching dollars is $243,135 and that is programmed in Hutchinson Island CIP grant funds, CIP sheets. Item number eight is permission, the Human Services Department is, Division is requesting $5,000 to be transferred from the medical $5,000 to be transferred from the Medical Services Reserve contingency, and that is located in the general fund, but we reserve funding for them, and the funds will be used to purchase additional testing supplies for the drug lab. The final item is permission, I'll start over on that one. On August 10, we, the board approved a permission to accept the E911 grant for customer premise equipment. The grant contract was not included in that, and we're requesting permission for the board to approve and execute the contract. And that concludes my items today.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Manning?
Move approval.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hurd and seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is departmental number two, contracts that meet the threshold for board approval, $1 million or greater, presented by Kristi Brother ting.
Good morning, Kristi Brother ting, purchasing manager. The first item for your consideration today is a contract award for the Port Salerno New Monrovia Water Main Extension. This is phase two of the project. Staff is recommending that the board award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Underground Construction Management Incorporated, in the amount of $1,212,000, and move that the board authorize the county administrator or designee to execute any and all documents related to this request. The second item for your consideration is for the on-road transit and support services contract. This is for our Marty bus system operation. I do need to point out the contract number is RFP 2020-3233, not 2021. This contract, when it was originally approved, was for one year only in the amount of $2,915,390. Funding is allocated by state and federal agencies on an annual basis, so this request is for year two of the contract, which is for $2,916,000, which will bring the total contract not to exceed amount to $5,831,390. Staff is recommending that the board approve amendment one for year two of the transit program to increase the total cumulative not to exceed amount to the $5,831,390, and move that the board authorize the county administrator or designee to execute any and all documents related to this request.
So Kristi, we're not increasing the amount by $2,916,000. It's allocated by year?
It's allocated by year. So this is, you are technically increasing it. The overall not to exceed value is going to be the 5.8 million, but we're only funding year two of the contract right now with this request.
Good morning. Would you like to introduce yourself? This is, is this your first time here to introduce yourself to, yes?
I'm Bill Powell. I'm the Transit Administrator for Martin County.
Well, welcome to Martin County, Mr. Powell.
How'd you get here today?
My bus. Yes, this is just the continuation of Transit Service from Marty. This is the second year of a three-year contract that we have with MTM.
Okay, so it's typically allocated by year?
Correct.
Right.
So we'll come to you again next year with a new request, which will then increase the overall contract amount, because it's still the same RFP contract number.
Okay. All right. All right, that makes sense. Anyone have any questions? That was your last item, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith for approval, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
You got your first 5-0.
There you go.
Thank you.
Welcome. And departmental number three, we have 2022 State and Federal Legislative Program, presented by Chloe Seeuperger. And then Donna, if you want to make that full screen. There you go.
She's on it.
Yes.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Chloe Seeuperger, and I am your legislative coordinator. And so today I'm here to present to you the 2022, which is very weird to say, I'm like still in 2020, state and federal legislative program. So you all received and attached to the agenda item is both a separate state program and a separate federal program. And so there's a lot of overlap, which I really appreciate when it comes to the county efforts. So I kind of combined them into one presentation, but do know that there's two individual programs for each state and federal. So let's start off with our delegation. We've got quite a mighty team for being a small county. We've got Senator Gail Harrell, Representative Toby Oberdorf, Representative John Snyder, who has done really, really well in his freshman term, and then we've got Congressman Brian Mast on our federal end. So the first priority that's always one of our biggest ones is septic to sewer, and this is our fourth year that we're asking for match dollars, and we've had really successful state and federal, or state and local partnership on this. So we're going to be doing another request for the next project geared up, which I believe is Rocky Point. We're still waiting to see what comes out of the last legislative session budget cycle. So the county received a direct appropriation for $500,000 for Port Salerno Septic to Sewer in New Monrovia, and we put in a pretty significant request, I believe it was $8 million, to the DEP grant portal that we're still waiting to hear back on, because there was a lot of money that went to local cost share water quality projects. So we're gearing up to do our next one. So we've got a 10-year plan that you all have set forth on for 10,000 septic tanks, and we're on four years of that plan, and we're on, we're on schedule, which is really cool. Another big thing that we've always done, but we're structuring a little bit differently this, this year, is the conservation land acquisition program. And you guys are going to hear a little bit more from the ecosystems on this, but we are trying to create as many projects as possible for state land acquisition, so coordinating with the state to get as much money as we can into a pot to acquire as much land. So in that is the Indian River Lagoon South Project, as always, is a part of SERP, so the natural lands component is big for us. We're still pushing to make sure that the state and federal government appropriate accordingly to that. Palmar is also significant for us, so we're still trying to work with the state to get, and Palm Beach County, to try and acquire as many parcels. So another part of this is the Loxa Lucy Program, and then there's a few other projects that you'll see in the presentation. But the strategy on the legislative end is working to ensure that there's Florida Forever Dollars and Land Acquisition Trust Fund Dollars going to this that we are applicable We are also really big on coral reef restoration and the Resilient Coastlines Program. This last session was a half of a billion, so that's $500 million going to Resiliency, and that was just year one, so let's stay tuned and see what happens. Speaker Chris Sprouls on the House side, this is his big program, is Florida Coastal Resiliency. And I know you've seen the awesome updates from our coastal department on what we're doing for coastal resiliency, so we're pretty eligible for a lot of amazing dollars coming out for both planning and actual projects. So we're pushing that as well. We're also supporting dedicated funding for coral reef restoration. Like always, we've been, we're the tippy-top of the coral reef tract that goes from Martin County down into the Keys, and since 2014, as many of you know, it's been pretty decimated by a disease that they're still trying to learn about. And since about 2018, 2019, and I want to say this pretty strongly, with Martin County as the leader, and so I know you as a commission, I know Kathy Fitzpatrick have been at the spearhead, even though we have the smallest liver of it, we lead some significant counties on the conversation, and we're continuing to do so, so hoping that we can get more state dollars for that effort, also on the federal side with the reauthorization of the Coral Reef Restoration Act. Something that's new, that is a little bit of a last minute addition, it's in the program, but it's the Reach Center. So Martin County is all about environmental resources, and that's always been our, our main platform. We are going to try to go forward with you, with all your approval, go forward with an economic development program. So Reach Center, also known as Building 17, is a appropriations request for the interior improvements on the building, which include technology for classroom space in the existing structure. And this is located at the Stewart Airport, and the project is in conjunction with Indian River State College, Career Source on the Research Coast, various other for-profit and non-for-profit organizations in the community. And so the Economic Council has reached out to us directly to assist with that, and they've been in the conversation for improvements on this. And the reason they're calling it the Reach Center and not Building 17 is because it sounds better, but it's actually pretty, a pretty great connection. The legislature just passed what's called the Reach Act, which is in the same boat for economic development improvements, and the Reach Act stands for Reimagining Education and Career Help, and it has a bunch of different components that are both policy and appropriations involved in it, and so they wanted to go and align with the state on this program, because it aligns with the act that was just passed last year. So additional priorities, a lot of them are familiar to you all. We still work on biosolids, specifically on innovative technology. I know we've done a lot of policy pushes when it comes to rulemaking through DEP, but on the legislative end, we're still looking to make sure we get innovative technology for handling our biosolids. There's the amendment to tree trimming protections, which has been a big thing for us as well. We're going to continue that effort to see if we can get, we can get a bill repealed or amended that helps protect this. Affordable housing has also been a priority for us, and so pushing to make sure that those Zdowski funds are not swept. And it gets a little bit tricky, because I know last session those Zdowski funds went into the Resiliency funds a little bit as well. It ended up being a better balance, so we support both cases. And then we always support our Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program on both the state and the federal side, and we always adopt their policy measures. The Loxahatchee River Preservation Initiative is huge. This is a cost share program between us and Palm Beach County and a few of the municipalities and the state for a bunch of projects on the list. Martin County's project is ranked number one this year, so we've got a strong team advocating for our project. And then the Water Resource Development Act, we push for every two-year passage. PFOS is another thing that we've been working on. I know this is an emerging issue that a lot of you guys have learned as the issues evolved over the last few years, so we're still working on that effort. Just to go over, so those are the main priority highlights. There's a couple more under each subject that we push each year, and of course, home rule and no unfunded mandates is always our foundation. But those were the big highlights on what Martin County's main foundation is. And then our dates for legislative session are starting January 11, running through March 11, and committee week actually starts next week, and they run through the fall and the beginning winter months as well sporadically. So it's already time for the next session. I've heard it's going to be the largest state budget in the history of Florida, and a lot of that budget is going to go towards environmental projects, restoration, water quality, et cetera. So it's exciting for us, and I know we've always been at the forefront of that conversation.
Chloe, just real quick while you're on that, do we expect that they'll be resuming in-person sessions and meetings, and everybody will be back able to appear in person?
Yep. I have not heard any kind of mask mandate, any kind of social distancing or restrictions thus far. I'm pretty certain that next week is going to be a normal committee week. So getting back to normal at the Florida Capitol. There's a lot of upgrades, if you haven't been. They've changed the elevator systems. There's, there's a lot of interesting technological updates they've done to the Capitol to try and mitigate the pandemic. One more thing I wanted to bring up is we're evaluating the federal program as a, as a staff in the county. So Martin County has always engaged on the federal side through Everglades Restoration, Coastal Resilience, so we've done beach nourishment, inlet dredging. We focused on transportation, and now there's this huge push for infrastructure. And so if you guys have read the news, you'll see that the, this House and the Senate are going back and forth on how much is going in there. So it's 1 trillion, it's 3 trillion, and once you get to the trillions, it becomes such a mind-boggling number that it's just, it's a lot of funding that's going into these projects that we're going to be eligible for. So one thing as staff is I'd like to gear us up to have a team and have resources in Washington DC that were ready for this funding that's going to drop, and we're formulating a really strong program that we can pursue these opportunities as they evolve. And so I just wanted to bring that one to your attention as well. And then finally, the recommended action is that you all approve both the state and the federal program individually. And if you have any changes or have any additional recommendations, we can certainly add that. And please know that we needed to get this in front of you all, because we have our delegation meeting tomorrow, not Thursday, tomorrow at 9:00 AM at IRSC's campus, and I wanted to make sure we had something to put up for our delegation members. But this is a living, breathing document, so as things come, and the community members do come to me as well, we can bring this forth to you to, to adjust.
Thank you, Chloe. Commissioner Hurd?
And, and what's the current status on visiting Washington DC?
So Fowler West and I have been, he's our, our federal lobbyist. He and I have been in discussion, right now they're still closed up, and a lot of offices are working remotely. We're hoping that soon it's going to open up, and he's thinking, come perhaps winter, there, there's an opportunity for us to do an advocacy trip.
Okay. And, and another thing, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place to put it, but perhaps, we purchased a huge part of Alapata, Commissioner Smith, 12, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, using wetland reserve program monies, which we were eligible to pursue at that time, and that ability has been taken away from us. So it's, it's, I don't know if it's in the, it's Department of Ag, don't know if it's in the farm bill, that there's a, an amendment that needs to be made, but certainly we need to be able to apply for those funds in order to be able to continue purchasing the natural lands, because hopefully, in the next word of bill, we will have our project participation agreement, our PACCER, with the, the natural lands component. So we need to, to expand our part, funding partners for land acquisition as much as we can.
Great. Commissioner Smith?
Thanks, Chloe. Two things. This morning, I brought up the retired Navy SEALs that we've been working with on the Coral Reef Strategy, and yesterday on our FAC call, Florida Association of Counties call, I brought up as well, and Eddie Labador, who used to be the Broward County Legislative Coordinator, or one of them anyway, is now working for FAC. And Eddie had a pretty good history on what I'm going to share with you, but back in the 70s, I thought it was in the 80s, there were hundreds of thousands, I thought there were thousands, but there were hundreds of thousands of tires that were put out into the ocean to do a couple different things. One was to strategize the floor bed, bed floor, seabed with hurricanes to kind of see if you could redirect the energy level coming off the bottom with the oncoming storm surges, and also artificial reefs. And apparently over the last maybe, it was about a five-year period of time, from what Eddie shared with us yesterday, that there were hundreds of thousands of dollars put into removing those tires. But apparently, there's still a lot of them, and the Force Blue guys were bringing it up to me that they're everywhere. They, if, for those of you who don't know, but when you have a hurricane, things move a lot, as much underwater as they do above water, and the tires are all over the reef, they're all over everything. And so if we can include sort of a revised update, Kristin, and I didn't know this part about Kristin Jacobs either, she had really kind of brought that back to light when we started working on the Coral Reef stuff. But if we can put that back into some of our language and get maybe the legislature to start focusing again on a specific funding strategy, and maybe with Force Blue, maybe with others, to go down and see if we can't figure out how we get rid of the hundreds of thousands of tires that are down there, is one thing. And last week, Commissioners, we had on our, one of our conference calls with the committee that I chair now at NACO, National Association of Counties, on our Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee, PFOS was a front row center conversation that we had. The, one thing I'm, I'm trying to do with that committee this year is to bring experts into the conversation of our committee meetings, to share with us both strategy and also others that are working on like similar ideas that we at NACO are trying to achieve with Chloe and others, our policy objective. to share with us both strategy and also others that are working on like similar ideas that we at NACO are trying to achieve with Chloe and others, our policy objectives. And so PFOS is one of those larger conversations. So we had the leading attorney that for 25 years has been working on this. There's no way I could repeat all of the things he said in about a 45-minute conversation with us all. But nonetheless, I think the most intriguing, scary part of the conversation is that 98% of humans have PFOS in their system. And PFOS is a chemical compound component that came from Teflon and the creation of Teflon. And pretty much everything that is fire retardant, anything that pushes off any kind of heat used at one time, PFOS or derivatives of PFOS. There's multiple different types of PFOS. I think from what he said, Chloe, PFOS was the sort of the 40,000-foot term. But there's multiple different components of PFOS underneath of it all. We had an issue with it over in, off of Monterey with that subdivision over there that we worked with the state on to get potable water into that neighborhood. But it's everywhere. And so we're working really hard on that. And Chloe, thank you for getting this on in the list. And the last piece, also been working with the Historic Preservation Board for Florida. They have divided the state, which is an interesting strategy that, I don't know why somebody didn't think about this years ago. There used to be one sort of state trust, Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. They've divided us up now into eight regions for Florida. And Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, I think, are in one region. And so the Church Coast region, we are going to be assembling a team of historic preservation supporters. But there's also some accompanying potential language coming forward that I'd like to add to our list this year for state legislation that both supports historic preservation, helps fund it. I think there's also a component to the Main Street piece of it, that there's some significant funding that will benefit the Main Street program, which we used to have off and on some other Main Street programs in Martin County. But I think Stewart is really the only program that we have left that's operating now. But it would dramatically impact Stewart and its funding strategy. So if we can add that to the list as well, Chloe, that would be fantastic. And otherwise, thank you for your support and update.
Commissioner Hearn?
Terrific report. I would move staff's recommendation to adopt the 2022 state and federal legislative programs.
Second for discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner, can you include those things that I asked included as well in the motion? Thank you.
Real fast, I just also want to say on the PFOS issue, we kind of are a little bit, we almost prematurely, not prematurely, but at the forefront of it, we got in front of it. And I know Ruth Holmes and I, yet last, during the pandemic, so last summer, we briefed our entire delegation on the PFOS issue. So we're hoping that there's a positive movement in the legislature this year on that.
And just one last piece to that. We also asked the attorney that is representing, I guess, the, those of us that are going to be permanently involved with PFOS. There are four or five states apparently that have adopted a very aggressive strategy and model as to how to deal with it. And so he's going to be coming back to us with that. And that's probably, I don't know if Florida, he didn't mention Florida in his comments. But we'll be bringing that back and seeing if we can't get the state to perhaps start investigating and thinking about adopting a strategy or a culmination strategy of all the above. So pretty spooky stuff, actually, but we'll work on it.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hearn, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great job, Chloe. Okay, Mr. Stokas, is this an item that COVID-19 Economic Impact Study is an item that we could do in about 20 minutes or so? Okay, then we are moving on to departmental number three, 2022, state and federal. I'm sorry, departmental number four, COVID-19 Economic Impact Study Presentation, presented by George Stokas.
Good morning, Madam Chair, George Stokas, Assistant County Minister. Just a brief introduction, to my left is Mr. Kevin Crowder with Business Flare. If you all recall, when we first entered the COVID-19 pandemic, this body directed staff to do an economic analysis on the impact of COVID-19 on Martin County. A task to your board item is a long and lengthy, multi-part study that can tell you quite a bit of what happened. And we're going to try and be brief and brilliant and surmise it here. Well, I won't be, it'll be Mr. Crowder, hopefully, to present that. And then after his presentation, we're more than happy to take any questions or comments. With that, Mr. Crowder?
Great. Thank you, George.
If you don't do a good job, we're going to break your other leg.
That's right.
It's not the first time I've heard that today. I want to thank you all for having us. This has been a lengthy project, it's been a very in-depth project, it's been a very rewarding project for us. We have a team that's very familiar with Martin County and the area. A lot of us have spent a lot of time here. We have a team member who's been a resident of Stewart for 40 years, provided a lot of value. We've got, you know, my researcher's mom has lived in Rocky Point for a long time. Our project manager's parents live in Stewart. So there's a lot of connection. In fact, even one of my team members just went hard on a contract for a house in Rocky Point. So there's
About Tom City, I'm telling you.
There's a lot of connection here. And so we have really enjoyed it. And again, thank you for the time that you gave us. George and his staff have been great, partners such as Tom and Ted and Joan and just everyone that we engaged with on this project, made it a very enjoyable project. The, we have essentially three components of the work that we did. The first is a market assessment and really looking at what were the impacts of COVID on your local economy? What was sort of your baseline before the pandemic happened? And kind of into the pandemic and then coming out of it. Following that, we looked at, okay, what are the opportunities? What are the different opportunities that you have in here for both recovery and growing? Just economic growth, sustainability, resiliency of your economy? And then taking that into really the action plan. This isn't a strategic plan that's, you know, sort of high level. It really gets into what are the specific actions that need to be taken? How do you partner with your partners, whether it's your educational institutions, your not-for-profits, the council, the BDB and others? So just for a quick summary, you know, this is a good chart because it shows, I think, what we already know happened with COVID. This is really looking at foot traffic in four of your business districts. It shows that decline compared to what a baseline year looked like. And in general, coming back out of it, and I think even when we've been here, we were hearing comments and seeing the return of people coming out more and more and more, very busy restaurants every time that we've been here, and seeing that activity come back. A little bit on just some of the sort of high level, some of the things that we saw in the numbers, though, was that your economic output in Martin County was about $14.3 billion in 2019, prior to the pandemic. As we, it's really the second quarter of 2020 where the impact of the pandemic was felt the greatest. That's where you see that you had about, you know, you did have a drop down to about $13.5 billion in your economic output on an annual basis. Over, you see on the employment side, dropped from $100,000 to $94,000, about a 6% decline in employment. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But you'll see that pretty quickly, things, there's a lot of things that were still happening. There's a lot of businesses that were still operating. And you see that by the third quarter, you were almost back to what your baseline number was in terms of your economy. Your employment hadn't quite done that yet, and there's a number of reasons for that. We have some of those listed there at the top. You know, you're still, it was still, when the economy was 6.6% below its baseline, employment was still 4.7. I think we all heard in the news comments about the extended unemployment benefits and the impact that that had on people coming to work. And that was one of the things within, there were other things. There were, you know, childcare concerns that were keeping people from coming back to work. There were business concerns in coming back to full staff, not knowing kind of where things were going to go. There were concerns about even still exposure to COVID by coming back to work. And then another thing that you see, and you see this a lot when you have economic disruption, is some people took advantage to change careers, to change industries, to especially to open a business. And finally, you know, it's a lot easier to, it's not as scary to become an entrepreneur and go kind of out on that limb when you don't have your job anymore, you know, compared to leaving something a little more stable. And so you do see a lot of entrepreneurship sometimes happen in these time periods as well. One thing I would note on the employment is we do see the decline. But you had 4,000 businesses receive $289 million in Paycheck Protection Act loans. Those accounted for about 37,000 jobs. So when you look at the $94,000 that you had in the second quarter, more than a third of those were, you would have been a lot lower without the PPP program, likely. So we did have that sort of preservation. The, we saw a lot of the loans where 85% of the jobs in certain industries, such as food and beverage, agriculture and manufacturing, were part of those PPP loans that were received. You also assisted an additional 406 businesses through your CARES Act money, preserving those jobs as well. And so, you know, PPP was 4,000 to 289. I think you had 5.7 million that assisted an additional 400. And so that, just the leverage you were able to get through that is significant on a dollar-by-dollar basis. Another thing, when we really got in is we look beyond just sort of traditional demographic reports, really into what are called tapestries, which the major research and demographic companies do. But it's really more socio-economic, and it's really about lifestyle. Because not everything's going to be cut and dried based on demographics. And so we looked at what are the top ones here? And certain words kept popping out to us. And so that's where we came up with this chart, is, you know, you are an educated community. You're independent, you're active, a lot of importance of nature and recreation and those activities. I think it was nice to be in here this morning with the Little League kids and really seeing that community connection. Because when we talk about economic development and economic recovery, what we've found is one of the most important things that you have to have is what are the things that connect people to their community? You know, and it is those social offerings and those opportunities to engage with each other is one of the things that's really important there. And so I think you see these sort of thematically kind of in the background as you go through the more detail of the plan. As we got into the opportunities, we identified a number of opportunities that were, you know, included, a concept of Innovation District, which I'll talk about briefly in just a minute. You know, the vision of the Reach Center, clean water, electric boat manufacturing opportunities, marine tech in general, public health, agriculture, equestrian, recreation, all of these things. But in really thinking about those, we said, well, how do we sum this up? How can we sum this up just sort of in a statement and something very briefly? And it's really these five statements. And it's preserving your brand and your values and who you are. Enhancing, you know, embracing your advantages that you do have on the talent. I know some of you have talked about it and we've heard talk about workforce, but you do have talent advantages here. Exposing, you know, your just continued prosperity and the positive stories you have, you know, key sectors in pandemic recovery as your key investments. And then capitalizing, especially on the clean sectors. And I think that as we talk about those and go into the action plan, again, another connection, interesting being here today, I actually used to do it for City, was being here for your federal and state legislative agenda. Because there's a lot of connection between this plan. And hopefully, this plan helps you and your staff and your team with, as you go and make, do that advocacy for a lot of these projects. I mean, a number of things, septic to sewer, land conservation, resilient coastlines, the Reach Center, biosolids, water projects, all are key elements in here. And so as we're talking about not just your opportunities, it's really, okay, this is the action plan to help you implement some legacy projects, which is the Innovation District, which to us, while we've defined an area as an Innovation District, we really think of Martin County as an Innovation District. You have innovation happening throughout the county. And it's not just at this stretch that we've identified, but you have it happening in Jensen Beach. You have Cleveland Clinic, you have IRSC, you have Newfield, you have a lot of innovation opportunity. And so it becomes really a matter of connecting all of these different assets that you have, all the talent you have here on it. You have a lot of private sector doing innovative things here already. And so it's really using that as one of your anchors. Especially, we mentioned biosolids, the advanced ocean technology is an exciting area as well. You know, recreation, quality of life, this is key to your talent advantages. Is again, the quality of life, those things that connect people to their community and that are important there. Septic to sewer, we've heard about that a couple of times. But also just infrastructure overall and how it does support the business investment in the right places. You know, your legacy industries, aviation and marine, and opportunities for growth in sort of your local supply chain of those industries. We found here in, over by Port Salerno, they're in the Manufacturing District, a company that makes transistors and different electrical components, not just for the aviation industry and the marine industry, but also the automotive industry. And so it's again, it's those opportunities in making those connections that will help your local economic resiliency. And then often understated or sometimes not as prominent, but the agribusiness and the equestrian are two additional very important sort of your legacy projects here for your action plan. So in the action plan itself, you see a lot of steps. We look at, you know, where are the potential funding sources to help pay for implementation? Who are your lead implementer and who are the partners that are going to work with that lead implementer on realizing those projects? And also, very importantly, some metrics, some key performance indicators for each of those action items. So you can see how they progress. And with that, like I said, we've really enjoyed this project and look forward to any questions.
Okay, yes, those questions.
George, did you want to say something?
Sure.
You lunged, and I was waiting for
I was waiting for you to ask a question. No, I just kind of, we really wanted to surmise, I mean, the plan itself is over 300 pages. The matrix plan itself is 620 Excel lines, which is, can be mind-numbing, to say the least. But, you know, we have good community outreach, good community partners. We'll be coming back to you on a project by project where we would aim at the ARPA funds, going for infrastructure and so forth. And I think from a staff's perspective, this really is a good staff plan. It really lays out what staff should be doing and the type of projects and so forth. So we're very excited to move in forward in the future with this project.
Commissioner Smith? I want to, yeah, we have one public comment. We have one public comment on this item. Joan Goodrich from the Business Development Board of Martin County. If anybody else wishes to provide comment, then come up and fill out a speaker request form. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners Administration. Just want to, on behalf of the Business Development Board, thank you for the investment that you made in this COVID-19 economic study. Of course, thank Mr. Stokas for his leadership on this, Business Flare for their outreach with our community. We stand ready to support the action items in this plan. The fact that it provides us that roadmap, that exciting vision forward to continue to make Martin County distinctive by design, allowing for that continuation of economic diversification, building that vibrancy and resiliency that we certainly needed and that we've shown that we have. Yet we can make stronger as we went through this global pandemic and ensuring that we provide those 21st century jobs and entrepreneurship opportunities for our community in the future. So again, I just wanted to thank you for the time that you continue to show your extraordinary support for our economy. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Joan. Commissioner Hearn?
So if we're intending to use ARP funds, which are substantial and then are going to be available for only two years, how are we going to evaluate potential projects and how are we going to prioritize them?
Those are a good question, Commissioners. So the way we are going to integrate ARPA is primarily, you'll see it in infrastructure for septic to sewer. And we're going to utilize the ARPA guidelines as to how you can actually implement this. There is also probably a need to, if you look at the picture on the There's also probably a need to, if you look at the picture on the, currently displayed on your monitor, the, there are parts of the industrial park that are still on septic tanks that, the proposed innovation district, which will be coming to you at a later date, finds itself surrounded by LMI, low to moderate income on three sides, and it also finds itself in a qualified census tract. So we haven't come to the board asking to use our allocated ARPA dollars at this time. We're going out and trying to get grants from the billions of dollars that are at the federal and state level to capitalize that and then use our allocated ARPA dollars as a last resort and on an individual basis. So there's that. And then you did hear about the REACH Center that we're currently out for two different grants from the state and federal level, although the board has already taken action, allocated approximately 2 million into that, that building. But again, last resort would be to use our ARPA dollars rather use the feds' or the state's ARPA dollars. But we'll be coming back to you with specific projects and specific uses for your allocated ARPA money.
And, and I know that when we put out RFPs, we have internal committees that we've established in order to make the, the awards. Are we going to do a similar sort of prioritization in order to evaluate the winners and losers for ARPA money?
I want, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions because I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. We, we are planning to go out for a request for qualifications for local vendors to perform engineering and engineering inspection for projects that have already been approved by the board for the use of ARPA money that you guys approved on August 24th. As far as selection of each individual project, I, I don't believe we, we can look at doing that type of selection, but really where most of your money has been allocated into the CIP, based on CIP projects, and ARPA directs quite a bit of the money that has, you know, basically your money has to fall into our target five main groups that we've gone over, which is low to moderate income, qualified census tract, designated areas by the county. So for example, one of those would be Golden Gate is actually split as a census tract. So Western Golden Gate qualifies, but Eastern Golden Gate doesn't. But county staff has gone through and has, you know, made those contiguous, because you can't argue that the economic conditions of a house west of Golden Gate Avenue is significantly worse than the one that's just across the street on the east side. And then you have the HUD income levels, which is 60% of HUD income levels and then 25% poverty. So as far as your social programs, we have a vent, we have a, we're, we're going to be working with United Way and two other, Mr. Heaton is with.
Children's Services Council.
I'm always going to get yelled at by that guy because I always forget. Him and Suzie Hutchinson. And then also Elizabeth Barbella with Community Foundation are acting as kind of our quasi-community outreach in the sense of how do you judge your social programs? And I also want to add, and I know I'm really kind of going into the weeds here, but ARPA is very specific on your, anything besides capital, you have to target that program towards those five populations and it has to be considered a proven, a, a proven method under the Treasury Department, which is an interesting definition. It's about two pages and I'm sure we can meet afterwards to go over that. But I believe those rules and those populations are going to predominantly direct absolutely where your money goes from the ARPA funds as we bring them to you. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but I don't know if we're going to necessarily do committee as much as the act itself pretty much dictates because of the limited population we have here in Martin County that meets those qualifications as to where your money goes.
I'm, I'm reassured and pleased to hear your response. I, I've read with great interest how some of the funds are expected to be spent in the jurisdiction south of us, and they are not capital projects. They don't seem to realize that these are two years of funding and then it stops. So I'm, I'm very appreciative that we're taking a very responsible role with these appropriations.
So I would say currently, just kind of where we're sitting, again, we haven't received final rule from the Treasury. I would say you, if you were to ask me that what's the percentage of allocation, 75 to 80% now is going to be capital. The social services, I think this board was pretty loud and clear that they want sustainable. It's, it's a, it's not just a free money, here you go type of grab. It's a, you want to start a program or in large program temporarily, is there some sustainability? We just haven't, I would imagine we'll start taking those applications in October and we'll be starting to rank those with those three charities, three not-for-profit groups to help us with that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. George, thank you. As you were going through this and I'm, and I'm thinking like, okay, so where do we go with this next? How do we start implementing both locally and, and at the state level in terms of an economic development strategy, if you will? Something I, what I like about the action plan and I, and I like the, the slide before that, you know, your, your preserve, enhance, expose, invest, capitalize on. And I asked Chloe to come back if, if she's still in the building. We should really kind of be thinking about how do we form a policy statement that, that guides us as, as a, as a community, but also guides us towards a, a policy, not unlike we did with our septic to sewer, where we said, look, state, we are, we are adopting, we are adopting strategies and policies here in Martin County for a 10-year reduction plan to eliminate septic tanks in the urban service boundary. How that works in the legislature and how that works with, with appropriations and, and agencies is they have their own way of kind of doing business and they have their own way of looking at a, a community's ask. So if, if you go to the legislature with a line item ask and say, I want $2 million to do X. The problem with the $2 million X problem or ask is that it's not so much maybe getting it approved at the legislative committee level, but as that starts working its way through the system, it becomes a, a really easy target for people to pick apart or a governor to veto at the end of the day, where you spend a whole bunch of energy and effort getting to a point where you think you're on the right track, then all of a sudden you're derailed at the very last minute because that really wasn't anybody else's vision. What, what we've learned over the years, and Chloe has been incredibly helpful kind of guiding us to create this strategy, is to think about how do our, how does, how does a, how does a policy staffer in Tallahassee look at a county's sort of overall strategy and say, why would we invest state dollars in this? Do they know what they're doing? Do they have a strategy? Do they have a commitment from their board? And are they all in? And I, that may seem simple, but when you hear the various asks in Tallahassee, there's not necessarily this behind it. There's an idea. We sat through one of the hearings last year and, and I was amazed that people were asking for $2 million sidewalk projects from the legislature. I'm like, that's kind of cool. You know, we don't do that. We, 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 we'll talk about infrastructure funding and then we'll figure out how to go for a grant from an agency or department that is applicable. Typically those single line items don't make it. So I guess, George, what I'm asking or suggesting is that, and, and I don't know if Chloe can pull something together between now and tomorrow, but it might be good to, to sort of float a general economic development recovery strategy in front of the delegation. So that there's an outline that says, here's what has been presented to the commissioner, here's what we're looking at. How do we, what can you give us to adopt as a, as a strategy, as a, as a, as a formal sort of action plan for, for the county? That then we can take back to the legislature or to the agencies that will hopefully get funded with various things on, on the economic development side? Because I think as Chloe said, we do really, really well on the water environmental policy side of, of the equation. We, we spend an inordinate amount of time on that. This side, not so much. And so I'm, I'm kind of challenge you guys if there's a way to create something in the next, you know, 20 hours or so? That, that gives a, a, a little bit of a box or a little piece of something to Chloe to be able to, to lead with? And hopefully she's listened to some of this, so I don't have to repeat it all. That we have at least something we can put in our platform that says, look, we're, we're coming out of COVID. We hired some experts to help us understand what happened through COVID. Here are some of our weaknesses and here are some of our strengths. And legislature, we want you to understand or our delegation to understand that there's a policy directive that maybe we can work on that will allow us to go back to the legislature and ask for funding to help support some of this. Did you hear all that?
She's in the hall.
Okay, good.
Basically just go by yourself to Red Bull.
Commissioner, I, I hear you loud and clear. I mean, as far as next steps for, for this is we, we, we as staff plan to go and we kind of presented on August 24th, we plan to go back and then go out for requests for qualifications to hire more economic development type consulting to further implement this plan. I think this plan is really the keystone of the asset you're saying. And I know that Ms.?
See you, Perga.
See you, Perga, thank you. And I sat down and have started to talk about that. And we've had some discussions. Obviously we need to have more with our Tallahassee folks, but we really, we're working on the asks and you're, you're right, we need a statement. And that's really the next step is now that we have this plan, we're going to, in the next 20 hours.
All I, all I hope to is, is tee up something so that they understand that we've done this. We have sort of the opportunity side and the next piece. And so much of what we're already doing has us kind of in line with that on the environmental side. So if you're looking at septic to sewer, that falls perfectly in line with doing some of this. But how do we take it just one step further and say, okay, what doesn't fall on the environmental side? Where are we on that? And how does that align with putting people to work, increasing our economic opportunity strategy side? That hopefully will become part of Chloe's mantra.
Absolutely. And I also want to thank Indian River State College and Career Source. I mean, workforce has been, I mean, workforce has been at the forefront of everything since we've been coming out of this COVID-19 pandemic. And those parties have actually started to talk more to the legislature than I have. But I'm sure Chloe and I will be spending quality time with our folks in Tallahassee.
Is that something you can do for tomorrow?
Chloe, can you come to the microphone?
Remember those days of pulling the all-nighters for tests and stuff and getting the papers done? Professor Smith has a project for you.
Okay. What do you mean specifically before tomorrow?
So we adopted four years ago a policy on septic to sewer conversion for 10,000 septic tanks. And we said, over 10 years, we are going to, as a county, community, invest and, and adopt policies and strategies, both in the capital improvement side, but also in the, the, the policy side to achieve that. On this, how do we turn what was just presented, like these last two slides, into some kind of policy language statement that we can give the legislative delegation to say, this is where we are, this is what we're hoping to achieve, and this is how we want to align our policies in Martin County with state initiatives and federal initiatives? So that when it comes time for the legislature to talk about funding various opportunities, whether it's economic development or septic to sewer or whatever it may be, our policy supports that. So you, you as one of many that have something to point back to that says, here is the county's policy that supports this and backs this up. It's not just, we talked about it, we had a great presentation, have at it. That it's actually something we can adopt as a policy, that then you have to work with as a tool to say to both our delegation and the rest of Tallahassee, here's what we're trying to achieve.
Okay. Well, I have a call in with Representative Snyder's office today, so I can see if we can augment the packet. And then I know our chairwoman will be speaking tomorrow. So if she has some time after the meeting, we can talk about augmenting the speech for, to put a line or two, to be more comprehensive.
And if we're going to do that, then you might want to, you know, look at adding something in our legislative priorities that aligns with that.
That was the hope, if you all agree.
Okay. George, great job and team. Yes. And the only thing I would say that when you're coming back, you're going for this implementation matrix, you're going to provide some estimated costs and things associated with this matrix, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Jenkins?
I just want to take a minute to compliment George. This ARPA, the CARES, the, these programs have my head spinning and, you know, and I try to understand it. And George comes to me and gives me an update and he has got his fist wrapped around it so tight, I am amazed. And I just hope you know how much we appreciate, I think I can speak to everybody, of, of how you've handled this. And I'm sure the general public does not understand that, but I can assure you, general public, this man right here has got it going on, especially with this, this here. This, you're doing an amazing job. So I just want to, I just want to say that. Thanks.
Agreed. Commissioners, thank you. I, I, thank you, Commissioner Campi. I, I, I appreciate the compliment. I also want to thank, really it is the folks. It's a big lift. It's not just me. I get to be the pretty face in front of it. But legal, I mean, Elise Elder and Ms. Manning and Ms. Merly and budget. And I mean, really Carolyn Schmidt.
It takes somebody herding the cats, right? And you're doing a fantastic job.
But thank you very much.
So on that note, I, I interact with a lot of different county staffs and I know a lot of people have hired people just to handle the ARPA money. And so the fact that we have existing staff to do it is incredible.
I agree. Thank you. So this was an informational item and we appreciate it. Yes, thank you. And we are now going to, it's 12:11. We are going to take our lunch break today and we are going to come back at 2:30 PM. Once we come back at 2:30 PM, we will be taking departmental number five, departmental number six and seven, and then at 5:00 PM, we will have our budget hearings. So with that, we are on recess until 12.